...for that family, so. Ms. Salvantis, you have the podium.
Thank you very much. Good evening, everyone. As you have received a copy of the worksheet that I prepared for you, in summary, it shows that between my 2020 budget and 2021 proposed budget, there is a decrease of approximately $78,000 and an increase in revenue of approximately $43,000. This is mainly because of an increase in outside funding that we were able to receive for our office when you look at why there may be increases in certain line items, mainly wages nonrepresented because we had funding to pay for part-timer, part-time drug task force agents to go full-time. Otherwise, the other increases are really associated to increased costs that we have sustained because of COVID expenses and related expenses that may have increased our budget somewhat. But overall, we have seen a decrease in a lot of these line items, specifically looking at meetings and conferences because I expect that the first six months of the year, we will see that there will be less travel to go to required CLE courses. So I just wanted to give you a quick overview of what I presented to you, and I thought I'd open the floor to any questions you guys have after reviewing my budget, and hopefully, we could, I could answer any question you may present.
Do you want to go through the summary sheet very quickly, Attorney Salvantis?
Okay, you want me to go through the revenue and expenses that I put on the worksheet?
Yes, please.
So the first line item you'll see under revenue is write-to-know. It went from $200 in 2020 to $25 in 2021. That decrease in revenue is because we're seeing more of requests, electronic requests coming in. The funds that we would receive as revenue is for the expense of making copies. So because we're seeing a lot of the electronic copies going to these individuals requesting these write-to-knows, that's why I felt that it was important that we decrease that. This year, I think it still remains at zero for revenue in that line item. Restitution went up. It was $2,500 in 2020 because of what we're seeing in restitution coming in, paying for certain fees, certain restitution that has been ordered by the courts for defendants. I increased that to $4,000. State grants, it went from in 2020, from $400,429, increased to $414,216. And I did a breakdown for you so you could see the Victims' Bill of Rights. That's for our victims people. That's $211,000 approximately. Our BOJO, which is Juvenile Victims' Witness Coordinators, that's $78,000. And the PCCD grants for violence reduction that we received, which is approximately $124,000. So that's where we saw the increase. And hence reimbursement, the same thing, it increased from 2020, approximately $402,000 to $430,000 in 2021. That is because, like I said earlier, it's the increase in outside funding, grants, other funds that are coming in to help pay for some of the expenses in our budget. Going on to expenses, wages nonrepresented. There was an increase in the wages nonrepresented, and the difference is because two full-time, I should say, two part-time drug task force agents went to full-time drug task force agents, which are fully funded, as I discussed earlier. That's why you see that increase from $877,000 in 2020 to $877,000 in 2021. Wages represented went down, as you see there, from approximately $2.540 to $2.508. Wages for the D M, this is, all of these positions are funded through the drug task force. It decreased because there were five part-time drug task force agents in 2020. That's why it was $119,000, and it decreased in 2021 to $60,000. That's because they have been moved up to the wages nonrepresented. So that shows the difference. For the full-time, most of them are part-time, the full-time. As you know, healthcare opt-out, it increased to 13 employees. That's why you see an increase there. Sickly buyback decreased. That we had in the budget is removed because our drug task force office pays for that expense, as well as the auto insurance that we have. So that's why you see a zero there, because that is fully funded by the drug task force. Extraditions increased. I put an increase in there of $15,000 to $20,000 because we're seeing an increase in the number of extraditions that we have, as well as the expense associated with COVID. So it's become more costly trying to get these individuals back to be certain, kind of holding that account of their charges. Examining, excuse me, examinations of witnesses. It went, this is one item that went up. From 2020, we had up approximately $118,000. I requested for 2021's budget, $130,000. That covers all the cost of trial, expenses for victims witnesses, lack of course, seeing an increase because of COVID here, because of travel and the suns. But also, looking at where we are this year so far, and we still have approximately two months left of the year, we're at $156,885 spent. So we had to do some transfers to cover. We're seeing a lot, and I've discussed this in a lot of my presentations to counsel, we're seeing a lot of juvenile offenders through the system. They're directly, they're defense counsels, what's called the decertification. And this is really a puzzle of the experts. And we're seeing an increase in juveniles being directly felt because of the violent nature of their charges. So we have to hire more experts in order to defend our charging of those juveniles as adults. Subscriptions, they increased from $57,000 approximately to $69,000. That was mainly our Westlaw subscription that went up. This is our final year with that Westlaw contract, so we will be renegotiating that next year. So hopefully, we'll see a decrease for the following. Meetings and conferences, like I told you, it decreased by $9,000 because I expect, at least within the first six months, we're not going to see as much travel going on with the meetings and conferences that our ADAs have to go to, the lawyers have to go to, and are part of their contractual obligations. And then the government units, it decreased to zero, the $64,957, because we moved it into the separate department that we created that is fully funded for the highway safety and DUI brands. So we put that into that department where it is funded by PECDA, paying for all of the expenses. So that really covers the entire worksheet. Is there any questions? Are there any questions? Excuse me. It's been a long day.
Questions for the district attorney? Questions from counsel for the district attorney? Well, it looks like your summary has a lot of information there with your documentation for it, so we appreciate that. If there are future questions, I'm sure we'll be in contact with your office. And from this point, we'll go forward. Any other questions before Ms. Salvantis is off for the evening? Thank you.
Thank you. I think that was the fastest presentation I've given.
Well, the summary was very helpful, so that's the critical part of the presentation, I think, that summary. Thank you. Mr. Rakovic?
Yes, Chairman McGinnity.
You have the floor, please.
Okay, thank you, sir, and members of counsel. I would like to start off by saying the request for the 2021 budget is actually less than the request for the 2020 budget was. I'm going to start with the budget worksheets and go through the three divisions of the prison. We'll circle back around in case we have any questions and try to answer everyone as best we can and accurately. One of the main issues that we have for 2021 was a contractual issue with the benefits, uniform allowance, and the clothing and uniforms. The issue became, the contract said that the officers will get, will not get a payment in a check or a separate check for it, so we had to redistribute the funds. When you look at the budget sheet, you see that it went from $1,950 to zero. However, the previous clothing allowance was $650 per individual. The new contract takes to $700. So when you look at the next line item down, clothing and uniforms, it went from $20,000 to $22,100. So we just adjusted it to the correct amount that we need per employee and added that back in. It's an 11% increase. That is due to the contractual increase that they received of additional $50 per employee and the moving it from one to the other. Other contractual services, that is a large savings off of the prison's budget. We had budgeted that for $302,000 in 2020. That has been reduced to zero. As you recall, last year, Catholic Social Services was in charge of our pre-trial services. We were notified that they were leaving. They're not going to be doing that. We had GEO, the company that does our day reporting center, put in a proposal for that. They had received that, and now we are changing it. The Luzerne County probation and parole services is going to be taking over that responsibility. So that was a large-
Mr. Highmarsh last week indicated that when he presented the court's side of the budget, so thank you.
Telephone internet, it's a 45% increase. The prison has to have a dedicated circuit to the Pennsylvania State Police cleaning system, the law enforcement system, look up driver's licenses, criminal history checks, et cetera. It is a increase of, well, the only, it goes from $3,500 to $5,145% increase. That is the first time in 15 years that they have increased that fee for us. It was $1,600. And also, I know I've, I don't want to say fought counsel. I've fought hard to keep our inmate, outside inmate housing in the budget every year due to the fact that, you know, potentially, we need to ship inmates out when we become overcrowded. Right now, with COVID, it's increasingly difficult for us to send inmates to other prisons, even if we were paying top dollar. So we've cut that by 50% from $200,000 to $100,000. And that is the administration's division for corrections.
Mr. Rakovic, could I interrupt you real quick? It's Walter.
Absolutely.
Thank you. I didn't, I don't want you to get too far along, so I don't have to have you go back.
That's fine.
When you're looking at the corrections administration, you put in for the uniform, clothing and uniforms, 54043? You made, you changed the 1950, you took it to zero, and then you put it in the clothing and uniforms?
Correct.
That, that number, is that, that's for the, that's for the corrections officers that are contracted, right?
Yes, it's actually, there's two different groups there.
Okay.
The way, the way it's paid in the county, one, they're issued a check for the amount of the clothing allowance.
Right.
The officers had asked for it to be put on a clothier's account. Okay, so we have three clothiers that we deal with. Two local and one is a national online ordering system. So yes, the answer is it's $700 times the correctional officers.
So which is probably, what, about 80 or 90, or how many corrections officer do we have?
Three officers.
Three officers that receive clothing allowances. That's the 700 times the, three of them, 2,100.
Oh, I see. So the, the actual corrections officers that work in the jail, they're under a different line item? Is that, is that further down then?
These are the training officers. The, under administrations, we have the training department. There's three, I don't want to say officers, you have two corporals and a sergeant there.
Right.
They are under administration.
Okay, because it says in, I'm looking at the budget, and I see the 1950 was, took, taken to zero in 2021, as you described. But then, as you go down further in the clothing and uniform allowances, it says $22,100. Is that a misprint on your sheet there?
No, the original budget was 20,000.
Right.
That, that, that amount is, that is for all of our new hires. Every officer that's hired from the street, we put them through the training academy. We have to pay for their uniforms. We have to give them two pair of pants, a winter coat, boots, handcuffs, everything else. So that, that amount has been 20,000. We're adding $2,100 to that for the three training officers, which brings you to the 21, 22,100.
Yeah, and I understand, but my confusion is in this worksheet that you're showing here. They're showing this is under the administration. They're showing it as corrections and administration, 4233, okay? And then it says 54043 clothing and uniforms, 20,000 adopted, and 22,100 present, requested. Yet, on our budget sheet, which we got from the manager in October, it shows that that number's 20, 54043. It shows that number's 22,100. So that's my confusion is, what am I, what's missing there? I think he has, I think he has all the corrections officers in that 22,000, right?
No.
No.
So why, so why is there a difference between the numbers that you're showing on your worksheet?
Because you're looking at two different, two different items. You're under administration.
Right.
And you're looking-
And the budget is administration as well? So I'm looking at page 47 of the budget, which is-
Yeah, I don't have that one. I'm actually using a different one, but-
Mr. Rakovic, maybe I can help a little bit. I think, Mr. Griffith, the 20,000, Mr. Rakovic, is for any new hires, but you show it in the administration line?
Correct. That is correct.
And the three additional officers that now have been taken out of getting a paycheck or whatever, but getting an allowance with a clothier, that'd be three times 700. So that's where the 22,100 comes in.
Okay, okay, all right. I'm good with that. That's perfect. Thanks, Mr. McGinnity. I appreciate that.
I think that's right.
That's exactly. I thought I, I thought I had explained that, but I guess not.
That was, that was, that was my, my bad. I was on the wrong line, and I apologize for that, Mr. Rakovic. Thank you. I appreciate the clarification, though. Thank you. You were, you were correct. I was misspoken.
I have a quick, quick question before we get too far, too. On that circuit cost, is that a circuit that we sort of go out on our own and purchase through like a Frontier or a local provider?
That circuit is actually a state police circuit.
I understand that, but who provides a service? Who's line is that? Is that one that you go-
That's each year with the state contract. They, the state will say for every one of them. I can't remember the company. I know that at one point in time, it was Commonwealth of Telephones. Then they changed it to-
Well, Commonwealth became Frontier.
Front, okay, so then it became Frontier, but then it goes to another one, CDM, which is a small name, but they provide things like that. I, the way, the way I believe that is the state bids that out for the entire state, and then anybody that's requesting it is using that service.
So they're breaking off the charge and charging us that price?
Correct.
Can you get clarification on that for me? Because that $5,000 is a lot of money for a circuit per year. I mean, normal T1 circuit, you can get for about anywhere between 800 to 1,000 or 1,100 bucks a month, or a year, I'm sorry.
But it also-
I'm sorry.
It also includes their-
Maintenance?
Maintenance contract on it. Any problems, the router is included in that, and it's a secured port router.
Okay, so it's other equipment. Okay. I thought it was just a little high. Okay, but now that you explained it, a little bit better. Okay, thank you.
You want to move on to the minimum offenders unit, please?
Yes, sir. The one issue, state housing inmate reimbursement. As you probably know, we had a, have a contract with the state where we will house inmates at our facility for a set figure for a day. When COVID hit, they completely shut down that program on us. They started either furloughing the inmates from the program, releasing them to the street on parole or probation, or in some cases, taking them back. So that, that has a 38% decrease. We are hoping that upon the COVID being done, that we will start to resume that again with them. It had been a good revenue generator for the county, and, but I did have to adjust that downward for 2021. Longevity in expenses, where we have a 10% increase in that. As you probably know, we have a very interesting contract. New employees hired day one will start at 55% of a top-rate CEO. Over an eight-year period, they progress to a 100% of the current top rate. What we actually did was took where every employee, every employee in the prison is at projected for next year, and with their longevity and raises, we're requesting additional $31,600 for that. Not, not an additional, I'm sorry. We're requesting $31,600. The benefit uniform allowance, as, as we talked about in the administration, when that was a check that was made payable, it was 39,000. Another issue that you have to look at is contractually. Last year, the officers were paid $650 for clothing, so we had an increase of $50 per employee with a total position, I mean, just in the main facility, there's 240 represented, excuse me, union employees that get that. At the minimal offenders, it's 57 employees. And we, as I said, previously said, the administration, there's three people in there that are actually union members also. So that's why you see the decrease in the one, but if you flip the page on the other, you have, you have the increase where it's moved over. Laundry supplies, due to COVID, we have some additional expenses. We have been doing laundry, but we're also including, they're called, we call them cellulose bags, our quarantine block. The laundry isn't just taken from the block, put into a hamper, and taken down to the laundry room. The inmate actually has to seal their laundry into a cellulose bag. That cellulose bag is then sealed. When it's placed in the hot water, it melts the entire bag away. So that, that limits the spread of COVID to the laundry workers or as that dirty laundry is moving through the facility. It's one of the actually most dangerous areas for the spread of COVID is on the clothes of the inmates. And there's also the increased prices on laundry detergents right now. Do you have any questions about that so far?
Any questions about the minimum offenders unit? If not, move on to the main prison, please.
All right. For 2021, the proposed revenue is 414-
I'm sorry, Mr. Rakovic. Let me, let me just catch you quick before you move along. Under minimum offender, I was just looking at electricity?
Yep.
There's an increase of $10,000 in that. Is there a reason why the budget was increased by 10,000 for this year? For electricity?
There absolutely is.
Okay.
Originally, before the McClure program, the energy efficiency program, all of the buildings were pretty much put into one pile, and we tried to figure out. What I was told that they actually took so much from, you know, this line item. If the bill came in for the main facility, they may have taken it out of there. Last year, we went to, we want to know exactly what we're spending on each individual building. If you look back, you can see in 2019, we had to transfer funds from the electricity of the main facility to the minimum offenders unit budget. And in order to make sure that we're actually correct, we don't feel that we're spending any more money on electricity. We're actually decreasing the main by that, by the main facility by more than that, and then adding the 10,000 to the minimum offenders unit.
So did the number go down in the minimum offender unit for electricity then? I didn't notice.
The number did not go down. We're actually getting a better handle on where it's at.
Yeah, that's, that's, I mean, that's like a $10,000 increase. And I, I mean, I'm looking at 2020, and I see so far, we only spent, and this budget's as of October, but it looks like 15,000 there. And 2019, you were budgeted 18, and, and you spent 22. So that's where you, we're speaking about the overage. So I was just wondering if you feel that a $10,000 increase is necessary, or do you think, you know, you should maybe bump it to 20? Or, you know, what, I mean-
No, I think, I think the 10,000 will be good. I, I think that'll put it, pretty much put us in line with where we should be. One thing that we did this year, a lot of our laundry was actually for the entire facility, for both facilities, actually, for a period of three months, was done at the minimum offenders unit instead of at, just at the main facility, while we upgraded some of the equipment here.
So are you, are you, are you kind of saying that the McClure project over there didn't save us money? Or are you just getting a handle on how it's being built, built out?
We're getting a handle on how it's being built.
I got you. I got you. Okay.
I think there was a savings on it compared to previous years.
Yeah, it just, it just caught my attention there. It's a $10,000 increase there, so. But, all right, that's fine. You can go on to your next item. Thank you.
All right. Our next item is the main facility. As I previously said, you know, we have 240 represented individuals, 15 nonrepresented in this division, for a total of 255. Wages represented, we have a 1% increase for all the wages, union wages there. The holiday wages, that, there's a larger increase on that. $20,000, to be exact. What you have to take into account is they have their increase, but on holidays, they're paid double time. That's why it seems like a very large amount of increase, but that's actually a dollar calculated figure of what we expect it's going to be. The other thing that I could say is for wages holidays, we don't tell the people that are going to be working. It could be senior people. If they want to be off, they would be off. And the younger individuals who are paid less would be working on that day. Or the more senior, top-rate employees can choose to work that day, if it's their day. I'm not saying you can just choose what day you want to work. But if, if the holiday falls on a Monday, and you're scheduled to work a Monday, if you're a senior employee, you can say, "I want to be off," so you don't get double time for that day. That number is just, it's calculated out. It took us a lot of time to figure that, but we believe that's going to be right on the, right on the mark. The benefits healthcare opt-out, 16%. There, there was increased participation in that from the previous year. The, I don't want to say guest figure is, but any new hire that's brought into the facility, to the facility, they can opt out during that portion of the year. So if you have someone who already has benefits through a spouse, and they're hired here, they would be eligible for the healthcare opt-out. So there is a little bit of uncertainty in what that number is going to be every year, but we do have, look, we look back at what everybody had claimed the previous- But we do have, look, we look back at what everybody had claimed the previous year. And that's how that number is calculated. Same thing with the benefits uniform allowance. It's going from a hundred and sixty-three, one fifty to twenty-five thousand, two hundred, because the officers' uniforms were moved to an expense line instead of the clothing. Same issue with that. Clothing and uniforms had a substantial, you know, increase, but it was offset by the benefits uniform allowance. The sewer bill, we have seen, I was, I heard the questions during public comment. Do we see a decrease in that? And I believe that that thirty percent decrease from the two thousand and twenty budget to the two thousand and twenty-one budget is a result of the ion system, and the decreased water usage that we have in the main facility. And then finally, the water, same thing, a twenty-one thousand, excuse me, twenty-one percent decrease based on water usage. As you know, the sewer and water are tied together.
Questions?
I'd be happy to go back through and answer any questions that that aren't on on that.
Yeah, Mr. McGinley, I just have a question. Could you explain the the holiday pay again for me, Mr. Rakovich? Because for some, I mean, you have the same amount of employees, so I don't understand the increase there. So could help help make me, help me understand.
As as you know, the contract that was signed was a two and a half percent increase.
Right.
For this year.
Okay.
So when you take that that two and a half increase, if you want to do it hourly or for an eight-hour shift, you're actually increasing it by that amount.
Okay.
Aren't aren't paid eight hours when they work the holiday. They're actually, they're actually paid for twenty hours.
Yeah, that that explains it. I forgot about the the two percent or two and a half percent increase that they got over the wages. So that would explain why the increase in the holiday pay, obviously. Thank you very much. And I think you did say that. I apologize. I was probably looking at something else while you were talking, so that's my bad. Thank you.
Other questions?
Yes, this is Leanne.
Go ahead.
Just a question. I know that the, you know, the facility can earn money if we have inmates from other counties. I just don't see any revenue for that. So at this point, is it just because we're full, or did I miss that?
Well, right now, it would be COVID. I, you you kind of did. I said that we had the state inmate housing program. It was a very good generator of money in previous years for us. We reduced it. It is in the administrative notes, the worksheet, on the first page. So it'd be administrative forty, forty-two, thirty-three, corrections administration. Excuse me, forty-two and thirty-four. Yeah, thirty-two, thirty-four, the minimal offenders unit. We reduced it from three hundred and sixty thousand, two hundred dollars to two hundred and eighty-five thousand, two hundred.
Okay, so any any inmate would just go under that minimal offenders unit? Okay. All right, thank you.
Other questions? Again, thank you, Mr. Rakovich. And if we have further questions, I'm sure we'll be in contact with you. Thank you for your work. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay. Going back to the agenda. We're going to go to number two. I believe the gentleman in regards to the Jubilee Attention Center RFP is on the line. Ms. McDermott, you want to start the discussion with that?
Oh, yes. Hello, thank you very much for attending the meeting. Thank you very much for the presentation, the information that you had sent over and the proposal. I'm sure other council members will have some questions. You do have the little diagram here of what you're planning on doing. Primarily, I think you have that you would like to do some office, some commercial, and then some residential. And if you could just expand a little bit on that, that would be a great place to start.
And who is on the line for Mr. Castillo?
Is I doing Roy Castillo?
Okay, Mr. Castillo, you have the the floor, please.
Yeah, you see me?
I can't see you. I'm looking at an email, but go ahead.
My 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 plan is, um, how you doing? I'm Roy. This is Phil. My client, Sultan. Um, my plan is, um, to make, um, offices in the first floor for lawyers, accountants, royalty companies, and also the second floor. The courthouse is down the block. So, and I wanted to do two loft departments in the third floor of each side of the building.
What timeframe are you looking at having everything, you know, start to finish?
I'm thinking, if I do get the property, I start early March. I'm hoping a year. I'm I'm thinking a year. With the knowledge that I have, I'm taking a year.
Do you feel, and it was brought up, it's a question, and I know a lot of other people have the question about the prison being so close. If any, and I know it's happening now, that people do go, you know, trespass onto that property, and will throw things down into the prison. Do you have any plans of, you know, maybe putting up a fence or something in in order to prevent anyone to do that? Now, granted, you have, if you're going to have tenants there, I think that would be a great deterrent to anyone to trespass onto that property. So to me, that seems like a wonderful thing, and the people would maybe not trespass if they know that there are people living there and offices there during the day. But just going to ask that question, you know, because I know some people did raise that question before.
Obviously, we'll have security lights in the back, you know. I think once a building is clean and this landscape and this lighting, there won't be as much as traffic. And you remember, you have to go up a hill, you know? There's obviously cameras. We have cameras throughout the building outside, security lights, you know?
Yes.
And that's just a plus. Right now, it's just, right now, it's dark. It's been dark for years.
Do you feel you'll have any problem filling the the vacancy once it is completed? Do you know if you have anybody that's already, you know, inquired, like, oh, yeah, I would like to to do, you know?
I don't think so. You know, I have a different mentality of designs, different type of just design. Like, actually, I spoke to my carer. He'd be interested in getting there, you know, if possible. And I don't see a problem with that, you know, just not, no. There's a courthouse down the block, you know. I don't see a big problem with that.
Do you worry about, you know, maybe not filling the space? Certainly not letting the property go. If you do renovate it, that wouldn't be, that wouldn't be a concern. But, you know, just wondering what your thoughts are on filling the, you know, property with the tenants.
Yeah, that's a concern, and anybody's had investing, but I think the design will speak for itself. The where was it located will speak for itself, you know? It's in a beautiful area. So, no, I really don't have, you know, I think it will, it's a good spot where people would take advantage in from there.
I know someone, I think it was Mr. Nap, that had just asked about the MS four cost. So I don't know if that's anything that you would even have to do, since it's an existing building. I don't think that you'd have to do anything with MS four infrastructure.
Excuse me?
With MS four infrastructure. So that's with the the water, you know, that would run off the property, would be the collection of it. It was just a question that one of the, it was a public comment, so I don't think that's anything that we would really have to worry about.
Okay.
I'm sure. Does anyone else from council have other questions?
Questions for Mr. Castillo?
Ms. McDermott, I have a question.
Sure.
Mr. Castillo, it's Walter Griffith. How are you?
How you doing, Mr. Griffith?
Good. Thank you for attending the meeting and helping us understand.
I appreciate it.
Did you do any research as to zoning variances? Will you need any zoning variances for the type of structure that you're going to build, is my first question? And secondly, what's your estimated cost of renovation for the project that you think you're going to be doing there?
I think went to zoning. I spoke to Mr. Harris. I told him I've game plan. He don't think it'll be a problem with City, you know? He said, Roy, I think that's going to help us, you know, you know? Money-wise, with my estimate cost and the relationship that I have with contractors and friends like that and families, it's going to be, it's few hundred thousand dollars. It's not a cheap project, you know? But it's something, it's, I'm guessing over half a million, you know?
Yeah. What what what, do you know what that zoned at now currently? Is that industrial or is that, this is obviously not residential up there, right?
Mr. Harris told me that day, and I apologize for not writing it down, but he did tell me that. He did tell me, but it is some commercial industrial, I believe, but he told me what it was, but I just, I didn't write it down.
I think it's on the map.
Oh, is it a commercial, it's it's commercial industrial? So you would have to get a zoning variance to change it to residential, correct, or no?
Yeah, yeah, we'll probably have to go to zoning.
Okay. And you say the cost, the cost of renovations about two hundred thousand to half a million, right?
Probably higher than twenty thousand, like four hundred. Yeah.
Okay. That's all I have, Ms. McDermott. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in council?
Yes, it's Sheila. Thank you for coming tonight. Before I begin, I just want to ask you, I want to tell you that I'm a giant fan of your restaurant.
Oh, thank you.
Your new patio is just beautiful.
Thank you.
I just wanted to know if, how many lofts are you looking at? How many, what is the apartment loft rental situation for the residential? How many are you looking at?
I'm looking at, I I just, I did a walkthrough, but what I envision, I'm looking at two. I'm looking at one in each end of the building on the third floors.
Any idea of rentals there?
Renters?
Rentals. How much?
Oh, man, Phil, any idea?
Probably like twelve fifty. I mean, they're pretty big, they're pretty big areas. So I would say, you know, anywhere from twelve fifty to fifteen hundred.
And the other thing is, right now, do you have financing already?
Yeah, I do have financing.
All right. That's, that's all I have right now.
Thank you, Michelle.
Anyone else?
Leanne, if I could, one more time, if you wouldn't mind. The other question I have, Mr. Rakovich, is I I see he's still there. And I'm curious to know if he has any input regarding the ability for this property to be sold for this type of project? Would you have any concerns about that as the as the warden of the jail?
Actually, I would, Mr. Griffith. This issue was raised probably two years ago, and any member that was on council, I'm sure remembers it. I have a lot of concerns, security concerns, with really anything being up there at this point in time. The other concern, though, that I think we have to at least look at is we don't make any more land. It's hard for them to make a lot of land. That building is right next to us, right behind us. I I don't know what the future is going to bring for the county, but, you know, we we have to keep operating this jail until or ever when they decide that, you know, we want to spend four hundred million dollars to build a new prison, or whatever the cost would come in. Where with that property there, if need be, it could be, the building could be raised, that the mountain that's behind us could be leveled, and we could expand out that way. So, I mean, there are the security concerns, and then there's the the future concerns. I'm I'm probably not going to be the one that's here for it in five, eight, ten years. But, you know, this building is still being utilized right now. And I believe, you know, if we put the money into it and keep, do the upkeep on it, that potentially, we could, you know, expand back that way.
Yeah, and I and I appreciate that, Mr. Rakovich, because I do remember Mr. Kelleher raised that issue back a couple of years back, as you recall, of the security issues. And that's, I I understand, that's why Ms. McDermott probably asked a question as well about what provisions would Mr. Castillo put in for, you know, preserving that safety factor for you as a as a warden, obviously. I mean, you know, there's a huge concern there, so I I just wanted your input. And I I I kind of anticipated your response, but thank you for letting us know how you feel about that. Thank you.
I have one more question. Mr. McGinley.
Go ahead.
Mr. Castillo, you said that, you you know, the courthouse is really closed, so I think you're thinking the office space would fill up fairly quickly. But the courthouse towers, which is directly across the street from the courthouse, has had a lot of difficulty, not only with commercial restaurants, et cetera, but even office space. So I I'm not sure that necessarily that's a buy-in in terms of the courthouse.
Well, I'm coming with a different design, you know, I I I, we've been to the restaurant here. I come with a different mental design, more, more New York. I don't know if you've even seen my plan, even the second floor rooftop.
Yes, I have, I have the plans in front.
That was just a quick sketch. I want to do even a rooftop patio for the tenants in the building, you know. I come with a different plan, and with Mr. Mark, I I just, I would do whatever to work with the county. My game plan is to make the county better. I'm not going to make you guys look bad. I'm here to to stand by you guys, be with you guys. I'm not here to embarrass you guys. I'm here to obviously make a living for my family, my friends, you know, but also to make you guys, I want to make, I I I'm from Wilkes-Barre. I'm from Wilkes-Barre, and I appreciate the city. I'm here to be next to you guys, you know. I'm I'm not here to embarrass you guys.
Yeah, the the towers right now are being are being turned into apartments, correct?
I think part of them are. I mean, they've had so much problem with the leasing originally, and the restaurants have had significant problems. It's been years and years, when I was back as in the courthouse, thirty years ago, maybe, that that place was a very successful restaurant and bar. But
And businesses, correct?
And and there were a lot of lawyers and other people that dealt with the courthouse, but they have disappeared over the years.
Yeah, I think they're, I think they're gutting it now. I think they're turning into apartments, if I'm not mistaken. But like Roy said, like, you know, all those people that, you know, all those businesses that, you know, got removed from the from the towers could be prospects for for this, as far as attorneys, offices, you know, and such. So, I mean, the main idea is is to make, you know, office space for, you know, attorneys. Be nice, right above, you know, right above the jail. But from what, you know, I'm hearing, like, I don't know if you guys are going to sell it or not, depending on expansion. I mean, is it for sale? Isn't it for sale? It's my question.
As the real estate committee chair, I was given the task to put it out there to see if anyone was interested. And and I appreciate that we did get an offer. That's something that council has to has to discuss and decide. I mean, this is our work session to ask questions. We'll have the vote. I'm not sure if it'll be next week or the week after, so council has to do that. My
You guys are kind of like a little undecided as as what, you know, you want to do like prison, you know, for the prison property, but.
The prison is something that, again, will have to be, that that's a different issue, and that will have to be addressed. Hopefully, we could do something down the road.
Security lights, cameras, you know, I know the prison is a big factor that's behind it, and I think that's a crazy concern. I think it's very important for both for me and for you guys. It's very important. But this, you know, I'm here to, I'm not here to make that building look bad. I'm here to make that building, like, wow. This really is right there in Wilkes-Barre. I'm going to make this look good, and I'm giving you the word as a man.
I appreciate the vision that you have for it, because it does take a lot when you walk into that building and see the shape that it's in right now, to be able to have the vision to see what it's like. Yeah, it's it's structurally a good building. For council, my, you know, my argument is, this will be on the tax books. We will be making money off of it for the property taxes. Again, it's something that, you know, council will, you know, they have to, they have to vote on it. One more question with regards to the property. How much parking do you think you're going to be able to get into that? Because that was just something I was wondering. I know there's a fence up there now. There's some trees that maybe can be cleared, but did you take into consideration how many parking spaces you would be able to get in there?
Yeah, we have a map, and I'm pretty sure I I put it in my bid, if you guys can see it. How many parking do you have, Phil?
It should be, it should be a plan attached to Roy's middle, but
I wanted to take some trees out.
About fifty.
Oh, that's right. Yeah, you're looking at it right now. You wouldn't think that you could fit that many. Yeah, you, looking at it right now, you wouldn't think that you could fit that many in there, so that's, that's a, that's a wonderful thing.
Yeah, I mean, that, that's the biggest thing right there, is parking.
Yeah, that's the most important, the parking.
Yeah, I'm surprised that you could get fifty spots out of that, but that's, again, that's wonderful. Anyone else from council, because I know, um, if there's any questions, this is the time to, you know, be able to ask.
Did, did you, uh, Leanne, if you, if I might? Um, did you have any, uh, ideas about putting an elevator in there? I know when we had a discussion about transferring that property for county use, one of the big concerns was there's no elevator in the building, so are you planning to put an elevator in there?
I think we have to, because for handicapped, you know?
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
Yeah, we, we have a plan for that.
Okay, all right, thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. McGinn.
Okay.
Mr. Castillo.
Good.
Mr. McGinnley, Bobby Schnitt.
Go ahead, Mr. Schnitt.
Uh, for Mr. Castillo, uh, you seem like, uh, I don't know you, but you seem like, uh, you're an upf- upfront man, and all you wanna do is good for the city. Uh, my question to you, have you ever developed any other kind of buildings, uh, of this size?
Hmm, sure, to be honest with you, no, I have not developed any of this size, but I feel like I have the resources, I have friends, I have the contractors, and I built a few houses in the past few years, you know, I built about four houses, and I feel I have the knowledge and I have the team to back me up.
If I could just make a comment, Mr. McGinnley, it's Kendra.
Go ahead.
Uh, Mr. Castillo, uh, my name's Kendra, I just wanted to say, um, you know, whether council votes, um, for or against this, I think that your idea is a great one. I love that you're a local high school graduate, just trying to make your hometown better. Um, and your vision for this building, um, like with the rooftop garden, um, and the, like, the penthouse apartments, I think, I, I think that it's a, a great vision, and, um, I applaud you for that.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you very much, Mr. Castillo, thank you for hanging on while we got through the other parts of the meeting.
Thank you, McGinnley.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mark, thank you, Mr. Griffin, and Ms. Sheila, appreciate it. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
You're, you're very welcome.
Uh, going back to the agenda. Um, Mr. Vogel, do you wanna comment about your, uh, bylaws for the county cares commission? Mr. Vogel, your microphone probably is muted.
Uh, yeah, I'm talking to myself here, I'm sorry. The, the commission bylaws that are attached, uh, were approved by county cares, and we're just looking for overall council approval, um, for those bylaws at the next voting session.
Okay. Questions for Mr. Vogel?
This is Linda, Mr. McGinnley.
Yes.
Um, I'm just, I, I don't know that it's really necessary for the whole council to approve them. I think it's a commission, um, an operational thing within that commission.
I think that, uh, there was discussion about the bylaws, and that's why we had to put it on the work session. Certainly, we can talk about that if we go to the voting session.
Yeah, so, the, the reason I brought it back is that there is, I had some spelling errors initially, um, and I just wanted to clear it up with everyone, I didn't know the proper procedure, um, but I brought it back, just in case.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, back to, uh, real estate committee, uh, we have a gentleman, uh, Mr. Deandra, who has expressed an interest in purchasing a property from the, uh, repository. And here's, the motion would be to allow him to advertise the fact that he has expressed an interest in that property.
Yeah, this is, uh, uh, just, uh, before council, is giving him, uh, the approval to advertise for the property. Uh, Mr. Deandra has been waiting, uh, very patiently, uh, to get this on the agenda. Um, I know that, uh, Councilwoman McDermott, uh, has approached me. We do need to get, uh, a, 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 a more efficient, uh, procedure for individuals who wanna purchase properties, uh, before council, but uh, given the fact that Mr. Deandra has been waiting, um, uh, the real estate committee did consider it, uh, at the last meeting, and there was a recommendation to put it on the agenda for council to give him the approval just to advertise at this point.
Questions?
Mr. McGinnley, it's Linda.
Go ahead.
Well, my question is, looking at the, uh, proposal, um, that the property is assessed at seventy-seven thousand three hundred dollars, and the form that's used, the application there, is, um, one that we approved for use of properties assessed at less than twenty-five thousand dollars, and I would appreciate an explanation of that.
That's the, the form that we have, I, I, I believe that, uh, we need something updated, uh, but he was, uh, he has been waiting, it would have to be advertised regardless, uh, so, uh, just to get it on the a- uh, agenda before council, to have him advertise, uh, if there are other bids, and then we can, uh, address the specifics as to the valuations and the, and the bid after he advertises.
Well, I just think that there is a reason why we have that procedure for properties that are assessed at, um, below twenty-five thousand, and that it's specific on that form. So, um, I'm, I don't know, Mr. McGinnley, do you remember what the procedure was for properties assessed at greater than twenty-five thousand?
We could not, we couldn't find one.
Did anything on that, in that regard, uh, that I can remember offhand.
Right, we couldn't find one, uh, Councilwoman Houck, if you have one, uh, that's fine, uh, but regardless, he's gonna have to advertise anyway. So, uh, uh, I, I'm more than happy, if you find something, we'll use it, I think we need, uh, uh, as I said, even, uh, Council, uh, uh, McDermott has expressed, uh, that we need to revise and look at these, uh, uh, forms, but, uh, he has been waiting, uh, a significant period of time, uh, to, uh, to make a bid on this property.
Okay.
Okay. Other questions? If not, uh, the monthly division reports are attached. Uh, Mr. Pedry is not available tonight, he has a, a family situation with his, uh, son. They had a ten-two this evening, so, uh, you have the reports, do you have any questions? There are some of the, um, division heads have been on, I don't know if they're still all on, but there's some were on during the course of the evening. If there's any questions that need to be forwarded to them, I'll be happy to do that, to make sure we get any answers that you would request. Anyone?
Mr. McGinnley, I may be stupid in this regard, but what is the P card?
Uh, P cards, if Mrs. Swets is on, I'm sure he could give us a, a good explanation, uh...
I could take that, Mr. McGinnley.
Okay, there, there are, Mrs. Swets, go ahead.
Sure, so, uh, Councilwoman Sageman, so currently, the, the county had put out an RFP for purchasing cards, uh, a while ago, probably eighteen months ago, uh, got held up a little bit by COVID. It, we went with PNC, uh, after we reviewed the bids, and my team, the budget and finance admin team that we call it, that's really our, uh, accountants and our budget analysts, along with myself, who've been working with PNC, and the idea would be that this card would be used in lieu of any other payment, you could still obviously pay by cash, we're not restricting payment, but the county, instead of using check, uh, we primarily use pa- paper check, even though we do have some ACH, and the county would get a rebate, uh, similar to any other card where, like a loyalty card, so the vendor would get the payment quicker, uh, they wouldn't get a hundred percent of the payment, and the county would make some of that rebate. And, you know, obviously, in a zero tax increase year, uh, not that we weren't looking to save in prior years, but it's really important that we got this done, so my team's in negotiation to have this done by the end of the year, and we've had pre-improvementation calls for probably the past four or six weeks, and we're trying to get this wrapped up, so we're ready to go for January.
Okay, that's very, very good, I, I know, I know now I have a concept of what it is.
Okay.
Mr. McGinnley? Yeah, Mr. McGinnley, uh, Mr. Swets, is that budgeted the additional anticipated revenue somewhere that, uh, we could reflect on, uh, what you think we'll get from that purchasing card?
It is, it's in my book, let me turn the pages, because I actually have the budget book with me, it's in, uh, forty-one fourteen. It's in line four sixty-five dot ten, and we actually changed the name, uh, because Commerce Bank was the old vendor, so we didn't change the account number, we just made it, uh, Easy Procure PNCP Card, and we increased that from fifty to ninety thousand, so our hope is, over the course of a year, uh, we can get at least forty thousand dollars. And obviously, it's the first year, so we wanted to be a little conservative, and we can obviously adjust it from there after we have a year worth of usage.
Yeah, are we still using Commerce Bank?
As of today, we are.
I think I lost you, there you go.
What you cut out there, I don't know.
Sorry, yes, we still are, the idea would be for this to be done as close to year-end as possible, uh, obviously, either before or right after the holidays. We would send letters to the, the current, uh, you know, anyone who currently uses Commerce Bank, and that's part of our implementation hearings and pre-improvementation hearings, uh, you know, to let the vendors know, we'll be switching, here's how you use the card, and also roll out to new vendors that they think would be, uh, acceptable of the card.
Yeah, that, that was a, that Commerce Bank thing was a brainstorm of Tom Provola back in the commissioner days, and it worked out pretty well for those folks that were able to get on there, and it did generate some revenue for the county, so I appreciate the fact that we're, I, it's unfortunate if we're gonna lose Commerce Bank, but, uh, you know, they, they've been in it for about a good ten years, so, so, uh, I, I appreciate the additional revenue from that process. The only thing is, I just wanna make sure that there's additional backup to go with those purchases, because we won't have that, obviously, we won't have a paper check, and we won't have a payment authorization anymore. So, we'll, we'll, we'll need to make sure that that's available for review, right?
Yes, we'll go through all that, and that's part of the cause, uh, also, just so you and all of councils are aware, you know, we let everyone know, and always the current vendor as well, when we're putting out an RFP, uh, Commerce Bank didn't bid, so if you don't bid, again, I agree with you, I don't think they did a bad job, they're our current vendor, but they didn't bid, so I can't select somebody, or a committee can't select somebody to bring to me and the manager to look at that didn't bid, so yes, they're our current vendor, and I don't think they did a bad job, but they did not bid on the RFP.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? We're now open to the public, please. Members of the public?
Mr. Manta.
Go ahead, Ms. Manta.
Okay, is, is that the only vendor that they were able to get for that, that, uh, card for, from PNC Bank? That's one question I had, and some of the other questions that I have are pertaining to the, uh, the uniforms for the prison. Are they, are they bought uniforms, or are they rented uniforms? Do they, do they actually purchase the uniform for the soldier, I mean, soldier, for the, the prison guard? Or is that a rental of a uniform? If I could have an answer?
Well, the second one's very easy.
Mr. Rakovich?
Uh, the second one's very easy, Mr. Manta, that's part of the contract, they get a seven hundred dollar stipend every year, this uniform is their uniform, it's only for them, uh, the person who uses that money to purchase a uniform, but that's part of the contract. And I think, Mr. Swets, did you say that you had an RFP out there for the P cards?
We did, there was at least four or five, I don't have it right off the top of my head, because it was a while ago, but there was multiple vendors, and I believe three were interviewed, so there was a committee, there was more than three, uh, and then three were interviewed, and then a selection was made.
Okay.
Okay. Now, like I said, the, the reason I'm asking that, because when I did work for the, the bus company, they rented the uniforms, and it was a lot cheaper to rent the uniforms than to purchase the uniform. I mean, that, this is what I was looking at, because that's quite a bit of money, uh, increase for uniforms for a- all of the, all of the, uh, prison guards, so I mean, that, that, that would be a, 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 a high note for Mr. Rakovich, because, you know, it, it's a lot cheaper to rent it than it is to buy it. Unless I'm, you know, looking at something the wrong way.
But as I said, Mr. Manta, that's part of the contract, so that's what we have to live with at this point. Thank you. Other members of the public?
Mr. McGinnley, this is Mark Raybo.
Go ahead, Mr. Raybo.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, uh, first of all, uh, I didn't get any answers to the questions with regards to uh, the CARES Act funding being, uh, used for the, any part of the correction, maybe Mr. Rakovich touched on one aspect, but there was, uh, maybe others that, uh, with regards to, uh, any corrections officers that was maybe uh, had to go for testing for COVID or anything like that, uh, that it would be used for, the CARES Act money uh, was gonna be used for, I don't know if he touched on that, um, previously, but if he can touch on that, if he could explain that, if, uh, COVID CARES Act money was used to cover those expenses. And also, to answer Ms. Ms. Houck's question with regards to the property, um, I would direct the solicitors and, uh, attention to, uh, Pennsylvania Real Estate Tax Sale Law, section six twenty-eight, on assessment of restrictions on property sold from repository. Uh, it says, applicable to, only to the class of property which has been placed in the Bureau's repository for unsold properties, and to the sale of such property only at a time of, of sale from such repository, the fair market value shall be considered to be the purchase price for prop- purposes of assessment without regard to any other provisions of the various assessment laws to the contrary. So I hope that answers, uh, Ms. Houck's question, and, uh, if the solicitors can refer to, back to that, uh, that would be appreciated, and uh, happy birthday to the U.S. Marine Corps, on top of what you said, Mr. McGinnley, about, uh, Veterans Day, uh, being tomorrow, so uh, thank you to everyone, and good night.
Thank you. Other members of the public? Other members of the public? If not, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved, Leanne.
Ms. McDermott, second.
Sheila.
Who was that?
Sheila.
Ms. Sageman? All favor indicate by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any opposition, any abstentions, none heard, motion carried, thank you.
Thank you.
Merry the holiday tomorrow.
Good night.
Happy Veterans Day to everybody, I know I'm a big veteran, but happy Veterans Day, and God bless America.